Georgia, Kristen. Kristen?
No.
Lisa.
Come on, Mark.
Not that I knew for more than fifteen minutes, but...
Lisa.
You guys have the budget?
Yeah.
Alright. Um, not much has changed, um, except for maybe we're taking in a little bit more money. Um, and we've also added a couple expense lines, um, particularly, what's in here? Uh, we are spending more money on, uh, in the office expense, we updated, we're spending more money on preservation of reflections, um, which costs money to buy acid through boxes, tissue paper, foam, all that stuff. So that's an increase in expense, and then we're also doing more events, so we're increasing expenses there. But our fundraising has also increased in the last year.
No, I think the other significant thing to note is that, uh, on the income side, the city's contribution is gonna go up a thousand dollars a quarter. From forty-five hundred to fifty-five a quarter, and that is reflected in the twenty-two hundred. Last year it was, uh... Eighteen, yeah. Other than that, uh, you know, some of the items are up, and that's because we've had more activities, as I said.
What's our math on that one, the point two five?
The, uh, I'm not sure, uh, Elizabeth, if, uh, if the ten-four is right, that's a projection from us. It, it, it may be probably a little more than that, I don't know.
I put eleven thousand, seven fifty-one.
Okay.
And that's with, uh, the new utilities yet, so it might be more closer to twelve.
Okay, eleven thousand what did you say?
Seven fifty-one.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good news.
Bring it down to twenty-five hundred for the last deficit.
Yeah, and, and, and that deficit, of course, uh, you know, we typically generate that with additional fundraiser, or, uh, we do have a small reserve fund, as you know. The, the, the other thing that I guess we should prize you of is that we have a bill in the legislature again this year. Uh, I'll try and summarize how that's set up. The way the bill reads, we currently get point two-five mills. The state will get a grant, start the society, we get, the bill will appropriate a grant to them. The museums can then apply for that grant money. County's not involved, it'll be a straight grant application from the museum to the state historical society. And we can apply, for example, the difference between point two-five mills and one mill, what one mill would be in our county. Okay, we can apply for that difference. Every county across the state's gonna be different, and we know that, because the mills are different. But if that bill passes, then we will have the opportunity to, to get three times the money that we're getting out from the county. In addition, and it'll be an outright grant, there'll be some criteria. The museums will have to meet, uh, an upper income, a lower income. They'll have to be an authorized, uh, museum, recognized by the state historical society. They'll have to be a 501(c)(3). Uh, I have to have a, um, a minimum number of, uh, people come through during the year. Some criteria like that, because it will be written into the bill. It'll be administered by Amy Monson, the state historical society. This is assuming it passes now, and...
That'll be state money.
It'll be state money.
Not county.
That's correct. Totally state money, totally state money. And it should help all museums, middle-sized museums stay wide if it passes. District fifteen is on board, wants, they wanna sponsor it. They think that, uh, that it has a good chance of passing. You never know that, of course, though.
Have you educated the area legislators on this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just started three, but I mean...
Oh, no, not yet, not yet, because we want, we want draft of the bill written first by the Legislative Research Council, which is the next step.
Should be done here in November?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It'll be, I hope to get the bill drafted in the month of September, to the council.
I would suggest letter area legislators know about this bill, with some type of letter or email or something.
Yeah, and we will.
So they're well aware of it, is there?
Yeah, and we will.
Ahead of time?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. It'll be done a lot before the session, yes.
Yeah.
Well, we're also gonna go out through lists of all the museums, and have them also contacted legislative, so, yeah. You bet.
No, is this gonna have to be, uh, part of the board of the public?
No, no, no.
Or will this just be done right here?
Straight appropriation to the state historical society to be giving out these grants.
Okay.
But don't count your chickens before they hatch, but the bill has to pass. And we all know that that's not easy for us.
Well, I think you got past the legislators.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Lisa, you're the bodyguard commissioner, you've all worked like that. Heard you have a good season on.
Yeah, hopefully.
You got some big kids there, so...
Anything else there, did you say?
Huh?
Any questions?
Any questions?
Other than, again, you're doing a fabulous show.
We do.
We are, we're very impressed.
I tell them all the time. You guys need to maybe have a county commission meeting up there sometime.
At the ORE. Our classroom should be done next week, so we'll have a new meeting room and everything.
And how many people can you fit in in your classroom?
I don't know, thirty. Comfortably, if you could do more.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Lisa.
Good.
Thank you, guys, for your continued support. Hopefully, hopefully, we'll get past, so, yeah.
All right, Lord help you.
Thank you.
Kristen. Good morning, I'm gonna try to catch you up on time here.
Okay.
Um, not a whole lot has changed, um, from last year's budget, um, starting with the risk management. I don't know what page that is.
Thirty-eight.
Sorry, guys, Bill. Usually every year, but it didn't happen last year, there's a training for risk management. It's usually in Fargo or Bismarck, um, so that would basically take care of, um, a good chunk of the travel, um, and then the dues and the registrations. Other than that, not a lot comes out of that portion of the budget. Um, for hazardous chem, um, which, I don't know what page that is either, thirty-nine, thirty-nine. Um, all of our tier-two funding, um, from the different businesses that carry hazardous chem, comes into this, um, portion of dollars, um, and not a lot is taken out. If any yearly, unless our LEPC board decides that we wanna appropriate money to some kind of training equipment, or an exercise, or something of that, or we could do something with a generator when it comes time, things like that, but we haven't done anything with the funding in the last couple years. So, and then for my budget, emergency management, which is page, page thirty-eight. Thank you, Betty. Um, that's pretty much stayed the same, um, as far as the expense line, I guess minus the salary increase. And I did go down in our capital reserve fund, which I did raise last year for the computer, which we were all approved to, um, purchase. Unless anybody had any questions on anything. Also, I did keep travel as high as it was, and I did use, I used maybe Taffet last year. I budgeted in for the fact that if I'm able to go to OJDM, I know it won't be an annual thing just because of the expense. I didn't go last year. This year it is, um, towards the middle to end of November, just food for thought. If that would be something that I would be able to attend this year, it is down in San Antonio, Texas. Um, I can give you more details on it at a later date, too. Um, that's why I kept that expense line the way it was. Um, 'cause it'll usually cost around two thousand to travel there, with the expenses and everything. But that's up to you, we can discuss that later.
But four thousand would cover it?
Yes, yeah, with all my in-state travel, my running around, the Bismarck to goodness knows wherever. Um, that's why I kept it as, as high as I did. So, and like I said, I, I understand that can't be an annual thing, because it gets to be so much every year. But every other would be nice for the opportunity to, any experiences to learn from other jurisdictions in there. Unless anybody has any questions for me, I'll keep it in short and sweet. Good, okay.
Thank you.
Jim Chatton.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
What looks like in the budget right now, a four-point-three percent overall increase in revenue from last year to this year is actually probably gonna be less, because we, as of the end of July, we've already collected a hundred-three percent of both city and county expected revenues. And we've got several months to go, it won't go up that much more, but still, we've already met the resonance, so it's probably gonna reflect, actually, a four, this budget for 2015 will actually reflect something around four, maybe a little less, as an overall increase from last year, or next year from this year. I used, uh, what we thought at the time, I talked to, uh, Elizabeth, a ten percent increase in the county mill rate. Thought that'd be a very safe assumption. Looking at a decrease from, uh, this year of two-point-four-five mills to two-point-four-two mills, and we still see a ten-thousand-dollar increase in revenues, um, because of property values and whatnot, but in this year, uh, we, we got twenty-one thousand in state aid, which is kind of an aberration. There was actually about five thousand dollars of that, not quite that, um, in, uh, extra monies that we weren't anticipating, because many libraries, public libraries in the state apparently failed to make their, uh, meet their maintenance of effort definition thing, which is, you know, you have to, uh, equal or exceed the average of the previous three years of, uh, public, uh, tax support for the local library, and many libraries didn't make that, but the legislature, of course, appropriated the money, and it had to be spent, so we got, uh, we benefited from that. That is not included in next year's, I mean, I took that out, but we're still looking at, uh, they voted a eighteen percent increase in state aid to public libraries, so that is figured in. I, I, I went with a two-point-two percent pay increase across the board for myself and all part-time workers. We don't have a step system, as you know, unlike, uh, the more, uh, formal, um, pay, pay increase in pays for, um, experience and longevity, we don't do that, have never done that. I also worked in, there's a possibility that I'll retire next year, probably September, though my wife is suggesting the end of December, so I don't know. Right now it's up in the air, but it's worked, uh, it's worked a little extra in there for a possible one-month overlap with a prospective new director. Wow, we'll just see. Let's see, um, collection development, uh, in next year's budget for, actually, I think the second time, but the very best. We're actually looking at a total of seventeen thousand dollars for collection development. Sometimes we don't even go into a year with maybe four or five thousand dollars in collection development. So that's, that's really outstanding, and it meets the, uh, the prospective state library guidelines for public libraries as far, as far as how much of your budget you should be spending on collection development. So that's pretty huge. Are there any questions? We should end this year in the black, and... Shouldn't be a problem.
Any questions for Jim? They're all quiet.
That's good, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm good, Simon. Thank you, Jim.
Alright, thank you.
John Norrie.
Good morning, commissioners. I wish I could say I was gonna end this year in the black light library, but with a lack of airline income for four months, and paying for a twenty-eight thousand dollar environmental assessment to get our jet service, uh, kinda leaving me in pretty tough shape for this year, but, uh, we do have a little money in our reserve that will, will be able to take care of that and come out of it. Our, um, our revenues for the, projected for 2015, down a little bit, about five grand from, um, our forecast in 2014. Reason being is, when we've got a new airline coming in, there's some new negotiations that have to be done, and, um, Sky West is not an airline that likes to pay for ARF fees, so they want it built into landing fees and things of that nature. Between the lack of getting ARF fees for covering our fire department and things like that, and an increase in landing fees, but there's still a negative difference in between the two, so that, uh, that drops my income down a little bit for that much, or for this coming year here. Um, I was looking at a, requesting a ten percent increase from both the city and the county on, uh, on the dollars that, uh, that we get. That would put the, uh, the city as roughly at a three-point-two-five mills, and the county is at two-point-seven-five. And in both, both areas, we're requesting, or we're authorized up to the floor mid-level, but, uh, still, still way below that. Our expenditure side, um, trying to hold everything as, as close to the, as close as we can. The, uh, the salaries, the insurances, things like that, that the city put in, uh, that just includes normal step increases, cost of living, and things of that nature. So, overall, if everything were to come true, we're still projecting that we're gonna have a, a loss for next year, but I guess we can say that gives, uh, gives me the incentive to work for something and to decrease that, and to find some additional funding from the Aeronautics Commission and things of that nature.
You wanna raise the county to what?
Uh, it's, uh, it's a ten percent increase, uh, and that puts, uh, the mill levies up, or the total mills up to two-point-seventy-five.
And what do we have right now?
Two-point-seventy-five.
For this year?
Oh, for this year.
We're at, uh... Two-point-one-zero, and I project two-point-one-one, but that's just a protection. What are you requesting from the county?
Yeah.
And that's because the dollars are going up?
Okay, yeah, yeah, when I, when I figure this year, it's based off, you know, numbers that are not, yeah, not installed or anything.
So you're probably gonna stay pretty close to you, right?
Yeah, so... But, uh, you know, with, uh, I just, if I could take about one minute here, quick time, I know you're behind, but our airline service has really been doing well. Feedback we've been getting from our travelers has been, um, been very positive, both in service, reliability, equipment, and things of that, that nature, and they're, uh, they brought in all brand new equipment out there. It's really impressive to take a look out on the field and see what we've got. And, uh, along with that, we're, we're doing our punch list, just finishing that up for our runway expansion that we completed last year, should be done this week or next week, depending on the weather, so... So that's another nice, uh, nice little area, too, that we've got.
Are you seeing an increase in flying since you came in?
Yeah, on their, they started, uh, I guess, uh, we have about three weeks in June, so our first full month of, of July, we had like the second or third largest boardings in July for, probably forever, last ten years, for sure. Uh, we're gonna, we're, July is, of course, is a major travel month, and this is new, so and the folks that were coming up here visiting family from Denver and from those other places is just, just amazing. Really, we're gonna see a drop-off in August, but that's pretty typical, to see that drop.
Could our April and April, but they're important.
Yeah, yeah, the, uh, Kevin guy over there at the Grant Works here, he does a pretty good job on, on, in, on that and so on. And you do your interviews, never know what you said to the reader.
How much you should talk.
Yeah, that's right. He's been pretty accurate on everything, so that's been good.
Any questions for John? Alright, thank you. John, bring him over.
Dallas Lake Rachel. Hi.
I will, I will, straight back to work.
And I apologize in advance if my assistant makes noise. Uh, we pretty much kept everything as was stated in 2014, requesting the same amount of mill levy from Ramsey County, which holds forty-three thousand dollars. Um, I believe we'll budget it up to one mill, but, um, field of forty-three thousand will be sufficient for this, this year, considering wages will decrease. However, we're going to put a little bit more, um, effort and investment into our website this year. We've, if you can see that that went from webpage expense for five hundred dollars to eight thousand dollars. I'm going to totally revamp the website starting in January. The biggest key player in economic development at this point is, uh, proven study that, if someone's looking at your area, they're looking at your website first, and so ours is very outdated, and to get that up to date, um, we're gonna work with Red Plum, and who has, is the original builder of our website, and get that up to date. Additionally, we are increasing in advertising and printing, uh, due to the Bakkenwell Conference that I attend. It's a, well, it's annually, however, it's only every other year in Bismarck in the off-years, it's in Regina, Canada. So last year I went, or this, this year, we went to the Bakkenwell Conference in Bismarck. Great conference, um, very beneficial to what we, what we see happening with our industrial park and the direction we're going. However, we were very much amateurs compared to what was there for booths, and so we really need to invest in, uh, getting some booth banners and just developing our booths for the industrial park. I use Susie's stuff for tourism, but that really doesn't, it did give me the avenue to be able to open up the conversation as to why we were there, and what Dallas Lake can do, and a business aspect for the Bakkenwell, um, and factors. So with that, we're gonna invest this year, and then also next year, and so hopefully we'll be, have a, a good booth between the two years, investment, so... And now we're gonna plan on doing that every other year in Bismarck, and hopefully we'll see some return in our industrial park. Anything, any questions?
You have a big turnout in Bismarck, I'll take that.
It's huge, it was unbelievable, three-day conference.
At the City Center?
Yeah, yeah.
Fill it up, okay?
They filled it up, and then even the expansion, we were actually in the old part, um, where they're still under construction, and it was unbelievable among people that were impacted and touched through that, so...
And didn't it fill in the first day or something?
Um, within four minutes. Four minutes of it opening up, it filled with booths. So somehow, I think it was the fact that we didn't have the pressure, we didn't know how hard it was to get into it. We had heard it took, you have to get in there right away, so we just, Suzie and I went and set a calendar reminder, got in their rate as soon as it opened, and I think it was just that we didn't have the nerves, we didn't know how much pressure there was on it, until after the fact that they told us that if it lived a four minutes, that we were very lucky to get in on our first year. So, something that'll benefit Dallas Lake and Ramsey County as a whole.
Question?
Oh, okay.
And you?
You're showing us a baby, aren't you?
You wanna see a baby? I had a little girl, Nora Ann. Yeah. She's three weeks old.
Oh, she's awake.
I was hoping she'd sleep during this, but of course, this is when she said, "You're awake."
Three weeks?
Three weeks, yeah, yeah, she's a good baby, so...
And she has a new playmate who was born on Saturday.
Yeah.
Suzie's little girl was born Saturday morning.
And we were dead set that we were having opposites, whatever it was, so we all just thought she was having a boy then, it's a tiny, tiny girl, but we both have girls, so, we'll see you guys, thanks.
You, good luck.
Thanks.
Sandy, North Central Planning.
Hello.
Hello.
Uh, North Central Planning Council, uh, requested a half a mill again this year from Ramsey County. Um, we do take half of the mill as in kind for, in lieu of our rent, which we have established a rate of about eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month. So last year, what we actually received from the county was ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. And we request half a mill from all the counties, um, and that is used as local match for our EDA planning grant. We're on a seventy-thirty cost share, um, for that grant that comes out of Denver, so... And that basically is used to help fund our office and, um, the work that we do.
So basically, we give our quarter mill under the general fund, whatever it's worth, and then the quarter mill goes in lieu of rent. Yeah, 'cause we give them the space, yes.
Questions?
Pretty simple, worked in the past, you know, working in that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Steve Nelson.
Good morning.
Hello.
I guess I'm, I'm gonna keep you on, I'm gonna keep you on topic, 'cause mine's gonna be pretty simple, too, so, um... If you just, uh, just look, I haven't changed, uh, the salary thing, I just went with what I got from Elizabeth as far as what was recommended, and plugged those numbers in. The only other things that were changed on here, everything else I left the same as last year, because we're looking at my expenditures where we are this year, we're right about on par, so unless something major happens, but, uh, under the drug task force, we did increase that two thousand dollars. Uh, we did, uh, lose some of our, uh, lottery money that we used to apply for grants. They are cutting everybody a little bit, so we had to make that up a little bit, so that was a two thousand dollar increase in that from last year. The only other change, uh, there's two more changes that, uh, on our capital outlay. We went back to thirty thousand, which we wanted vehicle, 'cause we don't need two this time, so we're back on our number, our one, for the next four years. So we reduced that back to the thirty thousand to cover one, purchase of one vehicle. And the miscellaneous, um, community service program was added to my budget, so I left, I did increase it by three thousand dollars to account for the community service, since they had to put it in somebody's budget, so that was the reason for the three thousand.
What is, what does that indicate?
Community services, Debbie Adolph, and she does our drug testing.
Oh.
She does the juvenile court referrals, when they have to do, uh, when they go up, they have to do, uh, give me a second, what the word is, uh... Community service, we have to walk, walk, okay, you need help, hey, this kid come up work for you, he's gotta work out six hours. You get this kid for six hours, and then they do their community, you know, through the juvenile court. And that's what she's, she's half with community service and half with the law enforcement center, and she helps out the denture center on the other half. So this is our half of, uh, of that, and that's, you know, just kinda, so it would probably suggest to be put into my budget, so that's why the increase for three thousand was put in there. And other than that, I'm not, that's, not the only thing that's changed, from everything I left the same as last year. Kinda keeping it on as close to par as we can there. The one thing I'm a little concerned about is we're at what sixty-some percent of our maintenance this year, and that's basically gas prices. So, uh, I'm just kinda watching it, but I think we'll be okay with what we kept on the same as last year, so...
Face of people, it's awful tough to figure out.
It is, it is, and it's, you know...
It can, it can move so terribly much now.
So, that's about, like I said, nothing much changed, so...
That's good. Any questions for Steve? Thank you.
I cut fifteen, or something.
There you go.
Just as an insight, how much, how many years we experience, how many years is Sean down at Beverly Hill?
Two. I believe.
So he was hired at the general?
No, Jennifer's only made her one. In fact, the Jennifer hasn't even gotten a full year yet. Jennifer will be a full year, I think.
Okay, so these two are mixed around, these two salaries are mixed around?
On Jennifer is in...
On Jennifer, Sean.
Oh, that could be, yeah.
Okay.
Jennifer is not, only a year next month.
You gotta remember who's following you and all your things, so...
So, that's, that then I gave you extra time, or maybe I should've took my whole time, is that what you're saying?
I just got the Jill.
No, I think it's all pretty good, so, I mean, we're, I think we're in good shape, and I'd say now we can get back our own vehicle, and, and we're, we're holding our own.
That was, I really feel that was a very good move to start going with the...
Absolutely, there's no, there's no doubt, I don't know how you can even look back and think it was wrong to do, because we've saved so much money in the ma, I mean, our ma, we were paying the cost of a vehicle, and our maintenance wasn't low.
Yeah, and never having a vehicle you really liked.
No, and we're almost fixing them, there, there, I always had one or two cars over a Ford. I mean, always, I mean, every week there had something over there.
The lady, the lady behind you will dill that, too.
Yeah, yeah, that happened with us, too.
So, I mean, it, it's actually, we're, and then we're running them, we're, we're, we're having no issues with the four years. Uh, we're actually, most of them are running about four years, and we're getting real close to that. It's gonna be nice to see what they come up with, but the dogs that we just gave to Kristen had about a hundred-and-thirty on it, which is, half the time we weren't, we were getting them with eighty thousand on at the start.
Yeah.
And now we're getting, I know, even before, you know, I kinda projected one-forty, you know, that we... You know, that we'd give the five, but, uh, but we're still not, you know, we're keeping the regular maintenance on them and and I tell you what, we're not having any mechanical issues, we're not having maintenance issues.
And I would respectfully request that you two go up to district health and talk like a Dutch uncle to them to get a vehicle to start, spending forty-nine thousand dollars a year on travel expenses.
Start a driver to go, they paying off, we, I don't know what they're.
They're paying all their employees for it. And you start with one and work your way up.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
This year.
Rhonda.
You guys wanna hang around with the referee?
I think I'll be okay.
Okay.
I, I made a copy.
She's got another book.
No, just three pages, this was actually Ed's request, so leave it on him.
Yeah, you.
Oh no, so I gotta re-figure everything in?
No, no, it's not, it's not different than the one you have.
You also watched the tape last night, didn't you?
No, I have it, I have it, yeah. It's not different than the one you have, Betty. So this is, okay, so it's the same.
Explains it a little better on that.
Yeah, it's not any different than the one you have.
The back pages, that's, that's pretty wonderful.
Oh, am I supposed to give you one?
You probably do have one, she gave us yesterday.
Yep, it was attached, yep. No, I don't, but this, now I do. Oh, you can have that one.
I got two more.
I got one for you.
Because I had the county share of one million seven eighty-two.
She's got two.
One million eight twenty-five, one forty-one?
No, the one they gave me on August fourth was one million seven eighty-two, four ninety-seven, three eighty, so you did change, I got it.
I'm sorry, I thought we did not change.
So I gotta read bigger nails?
We didn't change salary, but, um, you can see there's a couple of different ways to.
I'm sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay, I, I thought we gave you the one, I'm sorry, Betty.
Sorry.
Um, six point one seven percent increase in last year's, um, wage, wages. If you look at the, I think it's your fourth page, you can see four employees got a five percent increase, five employees got a five percent increase and nineteen got the three percent. Um, the three, three percent for merit system employees is what the minimum went up. So if you don't give employees three percent, you just go backwards, you just keep getting behind, that means if you don't give Kristen Olson who's been here three years a three percent raise, I'm gonna hire a new worker, hopefully this winter, we didn't get any applicants by the way for our open position for Beth. But you'd, you'd hire them coming in at more than her if I only gave her a two percent raise, so it's just very difficult not to give a three percent raise, so. Um, we did really good last year, so this is kind of a, we're, we're maintaining, um. The reason we had to have a special budget meeting last night was I was hopeful that, um, Williams County would have got their tax stuff to the association of counties so they could have figured if we're ten mills over and we could have gotten, um, the department of human services if they're on budget or have a surplus, we're gonna get up to three hundred and hopefully a hundred and fifty, but, um, Williams County got a new tack, a new computer system January one and can't get their taxes figured to get a report in. So I think they're gonna get, we're hopeful by the end of the month, which is coming up here Friday, I suppose, is that the thirty-first? Cause Janu, July one was kinda D-Day and they didn't make it, so. Our travel budget went down too because of cars, can't say enough about that. But ours doesn't go down as much because we have more workers driving because we've added staff, so it's just kinda.
What you told employees, not that twenty?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
But you only have twenty-nine, twenty-eight listed here. Right, percent increases, you got nineteen, minus twenty-eight.
Well.
It's probably the part time, the overtime.
I have a part time, which would be thirty and then, oh, I know, I have a part time, which is Christie who I said for Peterson. The position that's not filled, that's thirty. Thirty, thirty-one and then the thirty-second one is the eligibility tech position for the Affordable Care Act that we, we kept it in our budget because we're still, um, they're working really, really well diligently. But I, I'm just afraid it's gonna explode, they're gonna come out with a new round of, um, budgets that you have to do by hand, we haven't filled that position, the, the eligibility workers have done really well, keeping up with it, we have six hundred cases they have figured to put on. I mean, it's, it's a, it's been a large increase in our caseload.
So they have added six hundred clients to the Medicaid, Medicaid expansion?
Correct.
Well, it must be good for the hospital, isn't it?
I'm guessing they haven't gotten those numbers out, I would have liked to give you that, remember last year I gave you a map of what the Medicaid dollars that come back into our county? They haven't, and that's a hundred percent and Myrna and Ed will remember last night we talked about the F map. Medicaid expansion is a hundred percent paid by the federal government, the state's not kicking in any money on those, so. Did I get to thirty-two, Myrna?
Yep.
Yep.
Uh, I'm just looking on the sheet, bottom grounds of county revenues. Is that going down? From a million seventy-nine thousand, whatever, to seven eighty-eight, seven eighty-nine, it's not a decrease?
Yeah, we, we do not have a, we have three hundred thousand dollars from the state with that budget, with that House bill ten twelve. And, um, that's what I started, I tried to hold off, hopeful that we get it. And what happened with that stop was, it's kind of confusing, the state is on a buy-in. So when the legislature met in January, that money was dispersed in July of twenty thirteen when we were already in our budget cycle, so we just held it over and used both hundred and fifty thousand dollar dispersments in twenty fourteen, which is what Terry Traynor recommended. And then I was able, and that only brought us down to nine point one mills over. So this year when he, Terry's getting the information, we're gonna be ten mills over. The catch is if the department of humans, remember there was that wording in there, if they're on budget? And Deb McDermott said, and I told Ed and Myrna this too, so I'm sorry, it was twice. Deb McDermott, the chief financial officer said, do you want me to write you a check right now for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars or wait and send it all at once? So I think she's figuring we're gonna get some more money, but, yeah. I think back years ago, maybe someone remembers, um, every county used to send their stuff into the tax department and it was a fiasco, so now it goes through one entity, the North Dakota Association of Counties, so that's the holdup. And it would be a holdup even if every county sent it to the state because Williams County doesn't have their stuff done, so. And Christie, um, does a great job on this, um, I can't say enough about her, um. So you'll see there's quite a difference in the Ramsey County money and three hundred thousand dollars, so our mills are gonna go up. Tucker County is paying, um, that was a little confusing the way that was written, um, I know David McGee thought that he was like paying just as much as Ramsey County and, um, or half as much, but that's, if, if you look at what the wording is by those numbers, they're kinda apples and oranges. County, county fund requests that they're gonna pay us is two hundred and seventy-two, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, the Ramsey County funds required i- is four hundred and nineteen thousand and that's thirty percent more than last year Scott, with the, minus the three hundred, so.
But if we get that three hundred thousand, it will only be
Hundred and nineteen.
Hundred and nineteen more.
Or even a hundred and fifty would make it look really good, I mean, how many mills would that take off, like?
But you're requesting one million eight twenty-five, one forty-one from Ramsey County.
Yep.
Right.
So that's approximately about thirty-five point.
Thirty-eight, eight twenty-three.
Well, you guys aren't taking the state and stuff off, there's a farm in mind after that, so it'll be about thirty-five point some.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have ownership.
Twenty-four. And if we tip, we'll need to do a special publication and we'll have to have a special hearing.
That's just for a fifty percent increase, just shy of fifty percent.
That's due to the back of it.
The three hundred thousand.
I know, that's why I kinda held off on our, or not approving our budget in July. But you reminded me that you have to poach, so, you did.
Yeah, we can always look down if we can't go up.
Yeah, so hopefully it'll go down.
Yeah.
And that's based on the utilities from last year, not, we don't have the monteros here yet.
We got a good selling point for that, just like, yeah, a little bit.
Can I have the copies, I know Hofstadt's in it, got numbers from Betty, he got a copy of the email he sent to Maggie Anderson, Terry Traynor's asked him to put that in the governor's budget so that we don't go through this, we're on and off, we're ten mills over, we're, and really with this, with six hundred thousand dollars and three hundred thousand dollars, six hundred a buy-in, or three hundred thousand dollars a year, it should be about four hundred and fifty to get us to, because we're only nine point one in my estimation, to make us more on par with the other counties what they pay. Now, of course, there's all kinds of issues with how they're gonna fund social services coming up in January, so we'll see how that plays out, but, um, it's pretty clear that the governor's intention is not to take over social services, he's not gonna take on eight hundred and fifty FTEs across the state. There's just no way that they're, could do that. So, to find a fair and a better way to fund counties back so they don't have to increase property taxes is gonna be the.
It's gonna be the big job, it's gonna be a big job for this, really, so I guess that's, you know.
Keep our legislature informed.
Yeah.
And you said.
They have to carry the wall.
You said that you're expecting hopefully another hundred and fifty, that was by the end of the year.
I'm hoping.
Three hundred.
She's hoping for three hundred.
I'm hoping for three hundred.
Oh.
But at least a hundred and fifty.
And that'll take us down at least six mills, maybe seven.
When did the one fifty come?
Thinking, um, beginning in August here, I think we just got it, it didn't come in July, like it should have, but.
Well, that's because at first I was saying, well, just hold off and send us all at once and then Terry Traynor said, no, email her back instead of send you a check, because your auditor's not gonna be impressed if, yeah, you won't do that. So I emailed her back and asked her for the hundred and fifty right now, because I CC'd him in on the emails. So, that was kinda how that went, um. The other thing is, if they're gonna look at last year, we're not nine mills over, so Terry's kinda worried they're gonna say, you're not giving any money. But that would be, in my mind, kinda stupid because, so we'll see, I just don't know and I haven't really. I know, um, Representative Hofstadt asked me to call him immediately if we didn't get his last disbursement. This hundred and fifty thousand dollars in July. And, um, we, we did, so I didn't call him, so he was kinda on that and watching it.
And we did figure that in the budget, so.
Yeah.
That's kind of a wash, but if we do get three hundred thousand dollars more, that'll make a big difference.
So how long, how far, it has to be prior to October before we finalize the budget, right?
But then the mills can, if we do get the money in, we can decrease the mills before November, when I certify the mills.
So really is it November first the due date?
Well, in November is when I really started crunching to get the mills on the computer and I will look at the revenue that's in. So if that three hundred thousand does come in, we should decrease it by, take the three hundred thousand divided by forty-seven thousand, so that's approximately what?
Six point three.
Six point three eight mills.
Yeah, three hundred dollars is divided by forty-seven is six point three eight.
Six point three eight.
So that would only take us down to what, twenty?
Twenty-nine, yeah. I mean, twenty-eight or twenty-five.
Okay, which is still. Yeah, I don't know, the state, it'll be interesting to see what the statewide average is this year, because I think everyone's costs have gone up. And if the state would pay the foster care bill and the Medicaid, that would be, you know, that would be fair, but it's really a difficult way, and, and I gave an article to Ed and, um, Myrna about this. You know, the, this, the United States is like this and the, our state is like this, in the greatest need areas, we have the lower tax base. You know, the social service area is, social service needs, jail needs are greater where you have the lower tax base, because along with poverty brings social service needs, jail, the need for jails. So it's really difficult for local county entities and state entities to do, like Louisiana and Mississippi are always, always, always behind, it's huge. Their land isn't worth a lot, they don't have a lot of industry. We have the Bakken now, but, doesn't help Ramsey County very much.
Well, one of our meetings, we talked about lawsuits.
Yes.
Somewhere at the school districts.
And that, that was not.
I think it's very right to their needs.
It's wild, I think, September.
But it's not in the constitution. I remember that, how much are we gonna fund the social service, public education, the state, in the constitution.
It is in the constitution.
Mandated to pay seventy percent.
And that's where the.
When the lawsuits started, they were at about forty-three percent, and that's when the school district dropped the lawsuit. And they didn't get there the first year when it was settled, I think they got up to, I remember right at sixty and the next year they got above seven. But it's in the constitution, there, it gotta be funded at seventy percent. And now, social services, there's nothing in the constitution that says.
I didn't have that in the law. The other thing for my soapbox is, if you don't pay out money in education and preventative social service programs, you are gonna pay it out in your jail and in your social service programs. If you don't fund those preventative programs and, and, and counties just don't have the money to fund home visitor nursing programs for everybody that has a baby, so they can head off all those costs, um, and that's the hard thing, we don't put a lot into our public health because we just don't have the money. And that would head off a lot of ca, costs on the road with our Medicaid and our foster care, even the kids we have in foster have a care, have incredible healthcare needs due to lack of education, lack of understanding and neglect, and if we had, um, more public health nurses, we, we might be able to make an impact on that. And of course, you know, it's a political issue too, if you're gonna spend more on the front end and the back end, but United States is going backwards fast as far as the amount of money we spend on prisons and, um, kids in foster care and, so. Anyway, so that, I think there'll have to be some huge shifts in how we look at this and I think the Bakken is gonna really push because they have human trafficking, they have their resting people in line at for prostitution, now that was unheard of even five years ago. And we have trafficking going on right now, in fact, I hit myself in the head, I was talking with a new worker. And, um, these houses that we go to where it's the cousins that are coming on the train from Minneapolis, those cousins, those scantily clad young women that are laying on the couch with a sh, with a sheet or a blanket covered up, they, they were prostitutes, they were human trafficking. And I mean, I saw that all the time, I mean, once a week it was so-and-so's cousin from the train. In fact, it would be an interesting little thing to sit and see who gets off this train here, because I think we have a fair amount. In Indian country, it's a little bit different look, you might be related to the person who's trafficking you, it might be your uncle. It might be, and, you know, it depends on your, the culture, but, um, you know, even in non-Indian countries, sometimes people, of course, traffic their relatives, but, um, the biggest case in North Dakota was human trafficking involved, um, nieces and nephews and cousins of the main guy that was trafficking, so. Because we're smaller and we're all kinda related.
And I, I think, we're gonna see a continual rise in the demand from your offices anytime this area gets bigger. You know, you bring in another business, it's gonna bring in more people, it's not gonna bring in all really, really good people. With, with an increase of population, you're gonna see that increase in demand on your, for your service people, but, from your offices.
The other thing that they talked about, what social service directors talk about, and they're seeing this in McLean, Mercer, it's Dakota Central. There's a huge number of people that go to the oil field, my brother's talked to me about this, because he goes, he works out there for two or three weeks and then flies back to Chicago and goes back out there and makes like more money than I, I mean, it's just crazy, it's just, um, unbelievable. But there's a fair amount of people, a lot of them, their whole families out there and they're, they don't pass drug tests, I mean, these oil companies do not want you on a rig if you're, they just don't want you. And so, and we've already seen that with families here that haven't made it out there, they've been fired from an oil job and so they drift this way, so.
I'm not ready to get back.
Well, my grandson just applied for a job out there, twenty-four people were hired, uh, two hundred applicants.
It's not.
And six made it through the training. So they're not, they're not taking everybody that walks in the door.
No.
We're seeing the same thing at Walrus, they're begging for people out there, but they don't get anybody to apply because they gotta pass a drug test. And they can't pass the drug test. That's why I still, now they, and they tried getting it through legislature and failed miserably. In order to give social services, you gotta pass one too. If the workers that are paying the bill for social service have to pass it, I think the ones receiving this should have to. That's a personal opinion.
How do you punish the children?
Huh?
How do you punish the children?
Don't you think them children whose parents are on. Don't you think them children whose parents are on drugs are being punished?
At least they eat, I mean, I, I don't, we're not ever gonna agree with that, I agree with you each other on that, but...
We don't have to agree on it.
But, and I would challenge you that, I think that the war on drugs has gone terribly wrong, we're increasing our prison population instead of trying to rehabilitate and responsibly, responsible use of drugs. Not that I think people on drugs should get jobs at Walmart, but we just haven't gone the, fell in the right road with that. Having said that, one of our budget lines increased immensely because of methamphetamine is coming back, huge.
Mm-hmm.
That's the seventy-five percent increase here?
Yeah, and that's, the drug task force is a very good thing, but they've locked, cracked down on the pill, the pill trade, and so they're back to making meth is what, here.
Absolutely. Heroin use is going through the roof.
Yeah.
Because they're making it so much harder to get oxycodone.
Yeah, heroin's the chief compared to oxy.
Yeah.
So...
And with that, you know, the stock price is going up and...
A month or...
A month or...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Yes, good job too, thank you guys.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Good.
Jeff, too?
No, no.
And you don't want me to ask questions?
You said...
Did you have a piece of duct tape for me?
I should get, well, I'm on, I should...
I got some in my drawer.
Okay, come on over. I won't say a thing.
I've been mean for you, I've been for me.
Where's the mustache?
Fifty-seven. Fifty-seven.
How about it? What do you wanna know?
Bottom line.
Bottom line, budget's gone down, revenue's gone up, and everything's balancing out.
Where've you been all morning?
Any questions for Jeff? I don't know if you have any specific questions about any line items in there or anything like that, but, yeah.
Did you add any, Jeff?
Did we add any what?
Line items?
Did you add any expenses?
No. We decreased some expenses, um, over the past couple years, we've gotten rid of that downstream acceptance program.
And that's even a part of your job.
Yeah, and then that ESAP, um, water storage contract, that went away. Uh, this was the last year of that water storage contract that we had. And that was money that we received from the state water commission paid us to administer that. But, uh, EP wouldn't play ball on that contract, so we, uh, didn't feel that it was in the best interest of the landowners to continue, so...
That's heat water worsened, now we're not fighting tides, what's, uh...
And that's, we need some repairs in that, uh, control structure.
Well, that tide, okay.
In there.
Okay.
And that, that is our responsibility. Hopefully we'll get some, uh, share on that with the state water commission. Either that or the structures didn't come out, 'cause it's not really doing any, serving any purpose any longer. Uh, the landowners, oh, four years ago, not quite that long ago, decided they didn't wanna store the water in there. We used to store it at half a foot above the natural elevation of the lake is. But when the contract came up for renewal, all the landowners have to agree upon it. And after several years of wet conditions around there, they decided that it was more of a detriment than what it was worth, so...
Looks good.
Yeah, I guess. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
You got ten minutes, Betty, okay. First one is page one, county commission budget, that's you guys' budget, did you decide if that's okay or not, or do you want me to change it? And so legislative here, that's why we increased the travel to ten thousand.
It's good.
Next page is jury witness fees, guardian of Adam, public administrator, one tenth of a mil we give to the association of counties for one more year, and then when the legislators meet, they should know if they're gonna take it over or not, so... Um, fees and miscellaneous, nothing. Human resource, that's Tanya's wages, we pay her a thousand dollars a month for her contract, so that's thirteen thousand. Why?
Thousand per month would be twelve thousand.
Oh, I put a little bit in there for, um, sorry, if she has any travel, if we have to have her come extra, that's an extra, sorry, I put a dollar in the next term. Sorry about that. Lost my train of thought. Next one is county auditor, I use Tanya's scale. And so if you have any questions on that. And travel expenses, the same, service contracts, which is part of Katie's, um, the document Pearl, so we can use it in our offices. Office supplies, the same, capital outlay, the same, 'cause our new computers are bought for this year, we're done. Miscellaneous is eight hundred, so, any questions?
Do you need more for travel expense because of the, of your... Oh, but you split it with, you split, you're gonna split with, with Lisa, so you'll be okay?
Right, I should be okay, 'cause I've been doing a lot of, uh, classes on webinars instead of going traveling. Which is really nice to do a webinar right on your computer. Next time I have to go unlock my door, 'cause I have phone calls and I have people talking, but I'm not even realizing. Okay, the next one is on page ten, moving right along. Life insurance, we pay twenty-eight cents of each employee, except social services is separate, so that's a hundred and fifty, we'll cover it very easily. Workers' comp, um, that's based on a percentage. Unemployment, and that's basically the general fund, if anybody, um, could go unemployment, not the highway or social services, they pay their own. And we pay whatever costs are, we don't pay any related to unemployment, like some companies do. Dues, this is the association of counties dues, it went up from ninety-seven fifteen to ten thousand sixty-five. Okay, any questions there? Page twelve, state fire and tornado. It's pretty much, it increases a little bit, and then it fluctuates and goes up and down. Liability insurance, any questions there?
It's too much.
Insurance is too much.
I know.
Insurance is retention. Go ahead.
Legal publications, I added two hundred dollars, because we don't have an election year. Um, but still, our legal publications, I shouldn't say that, elections, it comes out of the election, but not this one. And basically, as you notice, our minutes are getting longer, and we have to publicize, so I kinda increased it by two hundred dollars. So we should be pretty much on track. Dues, that's for the water users' dues, they get two hundred dollars a year from the county. Um, postage, that went down because election does come under this budget, so... And we do spend a lot on election postage, I can tell you that.
But it went down.
Well, we don't have election duties.
This is next year.
Yeah, next year. Please remind you of the... I know, I have a copy for the election years and not like...
It's Friday.
Yes, and it's Friday, yeah, I wish it was Friday. And copier expenses, since, you know, we've got copiers and we don't have to redo our contract, it's pretty much on track with the five thousand. I just upped it a little bit in case we make more copies. Election expenses, I put five thousand dollars in there, because we have to make maintenance on our machines, so they come out and service them and make sure the values are high. Plus, there's a new, um, we're getting new, um, and it's not gonna cost us a lot, I should've wrote down the percentage. But they're thinking that's gonna be in sixteen, the expense for that, but if you need to know, I'll get the numbers from the state, so... Um, next one is mental health, page sixteen. Mental health is when we, Lonnie asked to hire a attorney to give an opinion. And that's, um, it just seems like every other year it goes up, goes down, goes, it fluctuates a lot. Coroner fees, and that's when we send a body to this market for an autopsy, when our coroner recommends it. Audit fees, they told me our audit, because of our federal funding and our FEMA funding, and the gas either part changing, will go up. So, you've gotta take an increase every so many years. Miscellaneous general, basically what comes out of that is the old for the building, which is twenty thousand, um... And then, uh, let's see what else comes out of there. I have it written down somewhere, but not on my sheet. Um, twenty thousand for the bail lien in the city, we pay five thousand for the recycle center. Um, the point two-five mils comes out of this for noise center planning. Uh, we buy, um, plot books, they're around two thousand dollars, but then we in turn sell them, so we get the revenue back. If anybody needs to know it, leave mail, or I can get it pretty next time. Memorial building wages, that's usually during, um, if there's something after hours that Roger needs to come in, he does get overtime for that. So, but then we charge it back to who's over there, so it's kind of a wash. Planning and zoning, that's in case we need, we have it met for a while. So, miscellaneous general is sixty-five. Then the next one is health insurance, and because of our little bit of a decrease, I increased that. The next page is thirty? Okay, emergency four, and I might have to up this because of the changes in social services, so, um, just so you're aware of that. I'll have to increase it by, what was it, about forty-two six, they increased it? But then again, if we get that three hundred thousand, we shouldn't have, right? I should actually be able to decrease this somehow, so just be aware of that. I'm going to increase it probably to seven...
Twelve to seven fifty.
Seven fifty-seven, eight sixty-nine. We'll put it up that high, and then we can go down after, at the final, we'll know, we should know better enough over, hopefully. Um...
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Emergency fund, I'm going to put fifty thousand in there, but we're just a levy, 'cause right now I think we have, and that's not very much in our emergency fund. I think we have a hundred and fourteen thousand, but I'm trying to kinda give the taxpayers a relief. So, hopefully we won't need to use it for anything. That's my resolution, we couldn't lose this money. So, next page, if you have any questions?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five, yeah.
Okay, this is the county law where I told you, we're gonna be spending seventy-five thousand for paving, just report fifty-five, seventy-five hundred extra for Roger, and then there will be a fifty-three thousand in case we have any other emergencies. Hopefully the generator doesn't blow, but Roger said that's fixed, it's good forever, he thinks, we hope. Um, COI, there's nothing in there anymore, and that was the money we borrowed for roads until the state pays back. So that account hasn't been used for, I think it's four years now. The bond is the bond we have on that million seventy, the principal, but we pay fifty thousand and the rest is interest. So, and we can't buy a bill at this point yet, but, 'cause I checked on that, what are you asking? So, the balance at the end of two thousand fourteen is nine hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred, so...
One couldn't buy that now?
I will have to check with, um, Bill Fady for sure. Do you want me to check with him?
You should, and some of that money that comes back from the state, we could pay a lot of it, you know, out of fifty million dollars, you have an option.
It all makes sense.
It does, I'd rather pay it off.
Yeah.
If we could.
When, when they were taking out, I remember them talking about, you know, they hold up on that paid on, because people that are purchasing, going, lose their interest.
Right.
So what's the interest again about that?
Well, the interest, I think it's like four or five percent with, there's a note attached to it, so...
Yeah, 'cause that's like four times what any bank is paying, so actually people...
It's three point six, one, three five, oh, five four, but then there is a like a percentage, one percent, and then it changes. So...
Like they said, you can use that state money, some of it for whatever.
Absolutely, yeah, if we can, I think.
I think they're opening a door on some of the counties that took those bonds off or they wrote fixes. They're here, they optu bonds, that, that'd be my guess.
I don't know, to be, Bill Fady have, give us a report, so...
Yeah, let me...
So, any more questions on that? 'Cause I think I checked with him last year, he said, no, we can't, 'cause of the people that hold it on.
Oasis?
Oasis is page thirty-six, which is a factor Medicare on, so... More advertising fund, we haven't used that, we just, that's like a thousand, and we don't levy for that one. The money that money, if you need to know, I have a report here, how many do you know?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. March on top of it. Um, county correction center, I did give you guys a report, and I kinda leave, um, I don't know, my opinion, it's only my opinion.
What page is that?
Twenty-three. Six hundred and twenty thousand is what I put in there, and that's based on sixty-six dollars per day per prisoner. Um, so approximately hundred and... Hundred and seven... It's, it's a hundred and some thousand we have to come out of the general fund, because of the state.
At sixty-six dollars.
At sixty-six, and that's why I recommend you guys wait on this budget until October, September second. So we can have a better idea where we're going. 'Cause I got those reports on Friday, and I haven't really, to tell you the truth, I was doing a report for you guys, and I didn't have a chance to even look at it in the sub-page dating.
Eight sixty-five, still two hundred, two hundred is red.
Right, but then you figure this dating we get for correction center, we can offset that. And if you look at the sheet, I gave you...
But they're a bunch of two hundred is red.
Right, I, oh, right. But there is some questions I have on some of their expenses, and I, I haven't had a chance to email Peggy on it. Um, if you look at the, the back page. No, if you look at the first sixty-five dollars per day, maybe Bill, maybe Bill knows what answered. If you, um, look at the expenses, where it goes down to, let me grab my...
Two hundred and ninety on here.
Right. Um, reimbursement expenses, they're getting two hundred thousand in revenue, but yet their expenses is by twenty-five, seven fifty. I'm not sure, in the years past, the revenue and the expenses offset itself, so that reimbursement expense? For expenses.
Reversal was five, two, five, it's a...
That's right. As last year. I'm not sure why that...
What is that?
Shouldn't it be two hundred thousand? Yeah, and that's probably, plus I have a question on, at the bottom it says, five ways to adjust for deficit. Each county, which is the five counties... Each county, which is the five counties, why isn't it split six ways? Because the city's in this.
Right.
And that's kind of why I gave you this note, and I know this is how it's been for years and years.
Yeah.
But to me, their mill this year is worth thirteen thousand one for fourteen, collecting fourteen. Ours is worth forty-two, six, eleven approximately. If we would've took the, if they would've paid the thirteen-one dollars and we paid twenty-nine, I can't remember the exact year, I probably got it right, you know.
Your good friends.
Yeah, it wouldn't cost, it would, we'd have that thirteen thousand more to work with. So I'm not sure, call the board when they set this up years and years ago, that resolution. The city's getting by, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're right, I agree with you, I'm on quite a few years, you've been on the mission, I thought. City would really still go through here.
Well, they do for, um, lots of different accounts, but, um, you know, in attorney's opinion on the agreement, you know, he also alludes to the fact that the city was not listed in there as a person who has to pay on these things. So, I don't know if that's the reason why or not. Look at those agreements, and you can see the city listed as, you know, some of those responsibilities, so.
Right.
Um, I don't know if that's the reason why or not, but I'm sure, I'm sure they...
Oh, when the original agreement was signed, you mean?
What?
When the original agreement was signed, you mean?
Well, I think when it was updated or whatever, he just didn't opinion.
Yeah.
You know, we asked all our states attorneys to give an opinion, and he just didn't opinion it a month and a half, or two months ago.
And that was on that resolution they did for the mills, that everybody pays mill, and I know the city wasn't listed on there.
Yeah.
And that's due to the fact, because the city value is included in rent accounting.
Yeah, so you would be taxing the residents of the city of Delphite Place.
Twice.
Twice. But see, in this way, you wouldn't be, because they would pay what their mill is worth, and we would pay the adjustment off of that. That, that's just something I threw out there, and I mentioned it to Dick, and he said, no, you're taxing. And I said, no. I tried to explain him, and he, he didn't understand what I was saying.
Well, when the city puts into the county, like, you know, county money, they probably puts it, that's where it's coming from. Now, that's some of the things that we're, I was hoping that we could get talked about for people budgeting.
I mean, Peggy did a very good job, but like I said, I haven't had a chance to even go through her stuff compared to, because I was working my, my sheets for the board, to see where we're exactly at, so. But she did a very good job on this. But there is some questions on the numbers, but I, you know...
We're just gonna have to reply if you're working.
And that's why I recommend the board, if you guys don't mind, putting it on the agenda for the LAC one for September second meeting, if that's okay? So we'll have a better number. And the West Side O N M is the expenses that we pay for pumping is, you know, through the city. They bill us, and then we pay them back.
Is that scheduled to change now, Drew, that they got the new plants open and stuff?
Right, and remember, they said it would be more than what we budgeted for fourteen, that they would, um, if it went higher than that, but they would accept what we...
Budgeted.
Right, and so far it's been under, like, in June, when I ran this report, we budgeted sixty, and we only spent sixteen, but the second, the second quarter hadn't been out of here yet, so this was just one quarter.
And we decided...
It'll probably, I think sixty thousand will probably be enough, but I'm not positive, because, do the pumps run all the time? I don't think so.
No, and we decided to do something different, extend out the depreciation more than we thought.
So I put in five thousand dollars more for that. And basically, what this West Side O N M money is, is money from the general, which is allocated for state aid, gets put into this fund. Because we didn't do a special assessment yesterday, because it kind of went... Sakakui Avenue is basically in and out from that paving out in Creole, um, along that Sakakui Avenue.
Very little left to come in on that.
Yeah, very little left, there's probably three taxpayers that still, so. So that's gonna be, I think that pays off in two thousand sixteen or seventeen, I think it pays off.
It should be that.
So that's basically, it's not a mill levy or anything, it's just in the, what I have to budget for. The next page is special assessments, and what that is, is, um, the beautification in the county, like if they put flowers, like we pay for in front of the courthouse in the armory. And then like they did some mudjacking over along the sidewalks, so we're gonna see that bill, but it was very little, two hundred some and three hundred some. Altogether, it's very little, but if we do any paving projects, like we did one year by the highway shop, that came out of this fund. But usually Lynn is really good, I'll call over and say, if there was any specials coming up, can you tell me an estimate, so I can figure it in? We don't do the eight-year plan to pay the interest, we usually pay them off, so. The county park fund is basically, um, they request eight thousand dollars a year to fix the cleaning stations and all that that the county participates in. Bill could probably explain that a little more.
That's just the parks and stuff that...
Yes.
It's a county...
Landing.
County improvements on that for a reason.
And basically, we levy from point one five to point two-five, it's not very much we levy for this fund. Thirty-six garrison, that's basically, they request one mill every year. And if you look at that front page, decision to levy one mill. And then fifty through fifty-five is the senior citizens class. And that one I levy one mill every year, due to the fact that we get state aid back from them, and this year the state aid we will get back, a space of thirteen mill levy, which is actually fourteen, but it'll be thirty-six thousand two hundred and twenty. So one mill will be plenty to cover what everybody's requesting. The request from them is seventy thousand three hundred and thirty. Hamden is requesting forty-five hundred. Senior Mills and Services, twenty-one thousand five thirteen. Laton is four thousand. Abler County Senior Mills and Services, which is a book clinic, which they do, she kind of wrote a scenario on the next page, fourteen thousand three hundred and forty. And then R S V P is requesting thirty thou, twenty thousand, I'm sorry. And Edmore Senior Citizen is six thousand. Edmore increased their stuff because of the diesel, um, maybe their building actually fight diesel, if that's my understanding, so. So if you have any questions on those? And then soil conservation is kind of back, I didn't have it on the list, it's kind of back behind, it's at page forty-nine. They're requesting a little less this year than last year. So, it's pretty good. And then if anybody has any questions on that spreadsheet I gave you, it's a legal size spreadsheet spreadsheet. Is that too many people looking at this? If you look at the first line, um, last year our mill were a hundred and ten. This year, this is an estimate though, one twenty-two, nine, point nine two. So we will need to do the publication due to the increase. But like I said, the general fund will probably change due to the fact that if the county, um, correction center changes, and also the emergency four line will change.
The what line?
Emergency four, which is the levy number twenty-two, twenty-two, if you see the levy number, which is line twenty-seven. If you guys have lines, one mill.
How many mills did we do last year?
It's right beside it, if you see it's four mills.
Oh, I mean total.
Oh, total.
Ten. There we go.
And we're gonna go up almost thirteen?
Now, is that with, you know, is the included in that? Yeah.
Okay.
But that additional, that's why it might go up more. It might go up more.
It looks like the bulk of it showing up in the way you support it, right?
Yeah. And then, of course, the general fund, we can go to twenty-three. And if the LAC does decide that they're gonna have to go ninety-five, or eighty-five, or seventy-five, it's gonna have to come on a general fund, so those mills will go up more. And like I said, this is a rough draft, and it depends on utilities. They, one of them I know is going down a little bit, but another one is taking a hike, and bridges taking a hike. If there's...
What happened to, we can't go up after, really?
We can't go up after September second.
Well, social services already gave me their budget, so I will publicize it that way. After September second, we can't go up.
The first part that I'm reading on...
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Who's there is gonna have to be the LAC budget.
Correct. We're gonna have to do the LAC budget, Jerry's budget, because she's gone.
Jerry's gone?
There's a couple other ones that are gonna be on. We're gonna have a conference call with district health.
District health.
With all the different counties to approve their budget. Which we would have done with the veterans service. I mean, we can, we can put this...
Anybody that we wanna call back in, maybe we can call back in.
We can.
Go over again.
Can we?
Okay, all right, I didn't, I didn't know that.
I, I think...
I just, I'm just concerned about the... I know, we're out, we have not much money, and then what are we gonna do? That's my, that's, I'm just worried about that, that's all.
All about Nelson.
About Nelson.
County's saying, well, we're getting one-fifth of the services, we're working, you know, two, four all day, week. But I, I know...
Well, then what would we do, would we count their veterans that they have to go there, or what?
I think we would still have half and half, isn't that what you...
That's my...
I think, uh, period cooperation.
Is just not gonna get as much money from them?
That's one thing I didn't...
I don't, see, I don't understand that, that's my problem, that's why...
You set up the half and half, but I still think we're paying a bigger share of his wages. It was kind of, that's how I understood what you said.
Well, he's saving twenty-one thousand from them, though, that's what I'm worrying about.
It's four thousand.
He's got twenty-one thousand, but he also had twenty-six thousand from you.
So twenty-two, twenty-two...
Twenty-two something like that. Anyway, but they're gonna have to do their preliminary budget, just like us, we're gonna know when, what they agreed to.
Whether they agreed to.
Yeah.
And I have...
So we will know.
I'll email Jackie, and I'll keep it posted, so. And I know the VA clinic is gonna bring more veterans, but I wonder if we can wait a year just to see how it goes. Will we hire full-time? I don't know, this is just my opinion.
I know.
I don't see a whole lot of veteran traffic, but maybe there's phone calls. Because we see everything that comes in the door, we don't see a whole lot of veteran traffic, but, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't want to space, I've been open for two weeks. I do think we have a little time with this.
Well, we, we gotta have a year.
Yeah.
With this.
We, uh...
Right?
Yeah, because once you...
I, I think we do, so I think we have time, uh, I, I think it's extremely important.
Then we fund, then we fund the...
That we have, so we take care of our veterans. But, uh, I, I do think we've got the time to get this worked all, where we don't have to make a major change.
Yeah.
Within a two-week period.
Based on a two-week period?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We're even trying to get it done within a two-week period. Is there anything else?
Nothing else?
We'll soon do a term. Thank you, everybody.